Led by Commissioner English.
Dear Lord, we gather here tonight to consider the lives and livelihood of the citizens of Stafford County. We ask that you would give us guidance, give us clear minds and open hearts so that our decisions might benefit all. Guide us always in thy will. These things we ask in thy holy name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Bain. Commissioner English. Commissioner English, will you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Appicella, Mr. McPherson.
President.
Mr. Bain.
President.
Ms. Vanuch.
Here.
Myself, Mr. Boswell.
Here.
Mr. Randall.
Here.
Madam Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you, Commissioner English. Any declarations of disqualification or disclosure anyone would like to talk about?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I would like it be known that I have had meetings with the applicant for the Vista Ferry Farms and his attorney and with the citizens of the townhouse subdivision across the street from that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Bain. Anyone else?
Madam Chairman, I don't have any disqualifications, but I'd like to make a motion. I move that we move items three and four regarding the Wawa at Tech Parkway proffer amendment and conditional use permit to the top of the agenda and make them items one and two.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner McPherson to reorganize the agenda. Any other, any seconds?
One second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
All right. Go ahead and vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries six zero. All right. Now we move on to the public presentations portion of this evening's meeting. If you're here to speak about anything other than the vistas at Ferry Farm or the Wawa at Tech Parkway, now is your chance to come down to the podium. You'll have three minutes to address the commission. Please state your name, your address, and the district that you reside. When the red light comes on, please conclude your comments. Anyone want to come down? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public presentations portion and open up the first item on the agenda, which is now the reclassification of the Wawa Tech Parkway proffer amendment. And for this, we recognize Mr. Brian Gooch. And you're going to be jointly presenting item number one and two, which is three and four on the agenda, which is conditional use permit two, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. Brian Gooch with Planning and Zoning. The applications before you include a request for a proffer amendment in the B2 zoning district and a request for a conditional use permit to allow vehicle fuel sales. Both of these requests are to allow a convenience store with fuel sales on parcels 19 U5 and 1957B. The site area for the reclassification or proffer amendment is 6.05 acres. For the conditional use permit is 3.11 acres. The applicant is Net Lease Development LLC, represented by Charlie Payne. This is in the Rock Hill District. The property is located on the northeast corner, the intersection of Garrisonville Road and Tech Parkway and Furnace Road. Tech Parkway is a little difficult to see here, so I'll highlight that in red. The two parcels subject to the proffer amendment are shown in the blue outline and blue hash. The fuel sales CUP would apply to a portion of this area shown in the black outline. The area is zone B2 and surrounded by A1-zoned residence and vacant property to the east and north. B3-zoned office uses to the west and also a B2-zoned multi-tenant commercial building to the west. And to the south, A1-zoned residential use and a B2-zoned convenience store with fuel sales. The property is not located within the highway corridor overlay zoning district, which is shown in the purple line here. The Hcod follows the south side of Garrisonville Road through this area and it stops at Furnace The current B2 urban commercial zoning and associated proffers on the property were established in 2008. The current proffers on the property limit commercial retail and office to 60,000 square feet, regulate building height and architectural treatment, require construction of sidewalks, require interparcial connection to the property to the east, which is shown here, and require substantial conformance with the GDP. The GDP is shown here, depicted a bank adjacent to Garrisonville Road and a 44,590 square foot two-story office building at the back of the property. The primary purpose for the proffer amendment request is to establish a new GDP which reflects a convenience store of fuel sales in place of the bank use. Here's an aerial view of the property. It's primarily wooded and it is developed with one single-family dwelling located in the northeast corner, shown here. This home was constructed in 1967 and is currently unoccupied. The driveway for the home is accessed directly from Garrisonville Road and runs along the eastern property line.
Mr. Gooch, really quickly, how will that road be impacted by this change?
The driveway?
Yeah. I'm sorry, driveway.
So, the applicant is proposing to demolish the home as part of this development. So, basically, that driveway would be replaced with their side entrance for the...
And so, the property that's behind the blue shading where the proposed Wawa is going to go will be landlocked?
Uh, this property back here.
Yep.
They do have, they could access via Tech Parkway.
Do they have a driveway off of there? I drove there, I didn't see one.
It's undeveloped. I don't, I don't know that there's necessarily a driveway to it. There could be one through this property here. I don't recall.
There isn't. It's just that one driveway.
Okay. So, they, they could access through Tech Parkway or we'd have to look, look and see if there's any existing access easements.
Okay.
I don't recall any shown on the GDP, but perhaps the applicant can shed some light on that.
Going back to your, the location map in the handout, it looks like there's actually an adjacent parcel there between that parcel and Tech Parkway. And if you look on, on this slide that you have displayed, there's a white line there just to the north of the blue parcel boundary. That's actually a property line, I believe.
This one? Which white line are you referring to?
Right at the top.
This, up here?
Yes, that, according to your general location map, which may or may not be accurate, that appears to be part of property boundary between the adjoining parcel. So, this parcel would not have access then.
Um...
Or does not, unless they're owned by the same person. Hmm.
Tech Park...
That, that doesn't really impact this development, but it's just curious.
Okay.
Because it's landlocked either way.
That would be something that they would have to deal with at site plan if it is in fact an access issue. They would need to grant that access. The property slopes down gradually from west to east and does not include any sensitive The GDP submitted by the applicant illustrates the proposed layout and uses on the property. The images, this image is oriented such that west is up. The applicant proposes to adjust the boundary of the two parcels comprising the property such that parcel 19 U5, which is the one fronting Garrisonville Road, would increase from 1.6 to 3.11 acres and parcel 1957B at the rear would decrease from 4.5 to three acres. A portion of the property fronting Garrisonville Road would be developed with roughly 6,000 square foot Wawa convenience store and a vehicle fueling station would be located in between the store and Garrisonville Road. Fueling station would consist of a single canopy and 20 fueling positions. Underground fuel tanks would be located directly adjacent to the fueling area in the southwest corner of the property. And a loading zone would be provided on the east side of the building. And enclosed dumpster would be located at the back right corner shown here. GDP also indicates a 29,750 square foot two-story office or retail building to the rear of the property behind the convenience store. This is in contrast with the 44,590 square foot two-story building depicted in the 2008 GDP. On Garrisonville Road, the existing right turn lane serving Tech Parkway would be extended as shown here. And this would serve a right-in-only entrance. A full movement entrance would also be provided on Tech Parkway in the location of the existing median break. Consistent with the current approved proffers, the applicant is proposing to accommodate a future interparcial connection of the property to the east, and that's shown here. And as recommended in the traffic impact analysis, the applicant would restripe the buffer lane on the northbound Furnace Road, as shown here. And this would be to provide a dedicated left turn lane. So, right now, it's a combined left-through lane. And then you have the free-flowing right turn lane. This would add a dedicated left, so you'd keep the, also the, the left-through combined lane as well. Six-foot sidewalks are proposed along the property's Garrisonville Road frontage and along Tech Parkway up to the side entrance. Connections will be provided between the sidewalks and along these roads and the proposed uses. One of those connections is shown here. The applicant has also retained a proffer requiring sidewalk connections within the right turn lane island at the intersection of Garrisonville Road and Tech Parkway. The location is shown here. So, currently, there is a crosswalk here across Garrisonville Road with a pedestrian signal, but it goes to a curb cut here that's not actually connected with sidewalks to the other curb cuts located on this island. So, the developer would connect these with sidewalks.
Brian, really quick, is there going to be a crosswalk added across Tech Parkway?
In this location here?
Yeah, all the way over to the other side of Tech Parkway.
All the way across the road.
Across here?
Yeah.
Yes, there is, currently.
There's no hashes.
Transitional buffers, one other thing I forgot to mention. The developer would also provide a crosswalk across Tech Parkway here, which would connect to the existing sidewalks that run along the west side of Tech Parkway. Transitional buffers are proposed between the two proposed uses on the property, as shown in this area. Some of these buffer widths are proposed to be reduced through the use of a six-foot high opaque fence as allowed by the Design and Construction Standards Manual. A proposed proffer would require that the site be developed in general conformance with the GDP. The comprehensive plan designates this property within a commercial node and suburban land use designations. Staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the comp plan recommendations and policies and would be compatible with existing and future planned uses in the area. Additionally, the sidewalks proposed with the development are consistent with the recommendations of the recently adopted Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Plan element of the comprehensive On to transportation. A transportation impact analysis was required with this application due to the increased trips generated from the proposed convenience store and fuel sales use compared to the previously proposed bank. The TIA evaluated two intersections on Garrisonville Road, the first at Furnace Road-Tech Parkway and the other at Keystone Drive. The current proposed development would generate, as far as new trips, 1,962 vehicles per day, 277 during the AM peak hour, and 208 during the PM peak hour. This table here shows comparison...
I'm sorry, excuse me. Is that for both the fuel sales and convenience store and the office building or just the fuel sales?
That's for both.
For both? Okay.
For new trips, so that excludes pass-by trips.
Thank you.
The table here shows a comparison of no build conditions, and this, this is for the Garrisonville Road-Furnace Road-Tech Parkway intersection. This compares no build conditions in the year 2021 with build conditions in 2021. The build conditions do include the mitigation, which includes that additional left turn lane on Furnace Road. As you can see here during the AM peak hour, overall, the level of service degrades slightly from a B to C. It's a difference of about, average of five seconds. And during the PM peak hour, it actually improves overall from a D to a C, difference of about two seconds or so. The improvements include the site entrances, the extension of the turn lane on Garrisonville Road, and that additional left turn on Furnace Road. And the TIA shows that there's no significant impacts on the Keystone Drive intersection. The applicant did provide renderings of the proposed buildings, or building, shown here. Only renderings of the Wawa were provided, not of the, the retail office building to the back of the property. However, the, the proffers would limit the types of materials that can be used for that office building, and it would require that the architecture be compatible with the North Stafford Center existing office buildings. Staff does find that the proposed architecture for the Wawa is consistent with the neighborhood design standards. The proposed proffer revisions would reference the revised GDP, would reduce the permitted maximum commercial retail and office development from 60,000 square foot to 45,000, would require demolition of the existing buildings prior to issuance of the first development permit on the property, would require the construction of six-foot sidewalks along Garrisonville Road, Tech Parkway, and within the turn lane island, require that a crosswalk be provided across Tech Parkway, as I indicated earlier, require entrances and turn lane as shown on the GDP, and require the creation of the new northbound lane on Furnace Road. The proposed CUP conditions would require the development of the convenience store to be in conformance with the GDP with no more than 20 fueling positions, require the underground fuel tanks to be located generally as shown on the GDP, and require the minimum of 50% evergreens be used within transitional buffers, and also require a six-foot tall opaque fence adjacent to any residential uses. And it would restrict illuminated signage on the eastern facade of the building and fueling canopy until such time as the adjacent properties are developed with commercial uses, and require the sidewalks as shown on the GDP with connections to the proposed building. Staff notes positives are this is consistent with land use recommendations of the comp plan, including the Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Plan recommendations. Consistent with the established development patterns, proffers and CUP conditions will help mitigate impacts on the transportation network and adjacent properties. Architectural treatment is consistent with the neighborhood design standards, and we do not note any negative aspects. We are recommending approval of the reclassification with proffers pursuant to ordinance O-1947 and recommending approval of the conditional use permit with conditions pursuant to R-19296. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Gooch. Any questions from the commission?
I have one, a quick question.
Yep, go ahead.
So, regarding the buffering between the one residence to the east, they're going from a bank to a Wawa, and so they, they talked about the evergreens and the opaque fence. However, there's noise involved as well. Wawas and fueling and gas stations are a lot noisier than banks. Are there going to be any ways to mitigate the noise to that property to the east?
Let me chime in there because I'm pretty sure that that house is vacant.
Yes, I think it was sold recently.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's like not even really livable.
But it is a residential lot, though.
Yes. It's, I, from what I've heard, I think the intent is to rezone that property.
Yeah, I would imagine.
But I'm not certain. But that is the intent of some of the conditions with providing the, the six-foot fence and the, the mix of evergreens and transitional buffers to help kind of reduce those impacts a little because current proffers don't really get into that. So, we think that will, will help with that issue some.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Randall?
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, boy.
You mentioned that you're going to have a crosswalk across Tech Parkway, and then you showed a location on the GDP. Could you pull that up for me? So, you mentioned that it would be back where the office building would be, but there is not going to be one by the gas station?
Across Tech Parkway up here?
Yes.
Yes, there is one.
So, could we add to the proffers that there'll be two crosswalks across Tech Parkway? One up near the, one up near the Garrisonville Road and one back near the office building? Right now, I think it only states that a crosswalk will be built across Tech Parkway.
I had the same question.
And I think it needs to be clarified that if, if there will be one, I would prefer it being up by the, off of Garrisonville Road, by Garrisonville Road. But if you're suggesting that they could possibly put two there, then that would be...
So, I, I think you mentioned there was an existing crosswalk across Tech Parkway now.
Yes.
From where the Wawa would be to the other side. You also mentioned that there was a crosswalk across Garrisonville Road. However, the button is on the Sheetz side, not the Wawa side. So, how do we get a button added to the Wawa side? Because right now, there's nothing to trigger it if you're walking the other direction.
I didn't realize that.
I just learned it. I texted the owners of the brewery and they said there's definitely no crosswalk.
That, that may be a VDOT issue of adding that, that button there.
Yeah.
But I'm not certain.
Yeah, it's, it's just ironic. So, to me, that would be kind of a, like, that's a big deal. We need to...
That would be between VDOT and the developer, then? Or is that...
Well, we need to make sure because the, the Vista, like off Furnace Road is about 700 houses, and those kids all walk to Sheetz and Walmart now, and there's no sidewalk. There has to be a feasible crosswalk, both directions, across Garrisonville Road.
I agree. I will defer to the applicant on the ability to incorporate that.
Okay. You said there was a, there's already a crosswalk on Tech Parkway from a vacant lot to the, across the street?
I'm fairly certain there is...
Well, if there's not, maybe they could make sure that they put it in there. Because it's kind, it's very walkable right there.
Fairly certain there's some striping here for a crosswalk. I'm not sure about here through the, through the right turn, the channelized right turn.
Okay. Well, I, I think we need to proffer that either way, that those crosswalks need to be full crosswalks both across Garrisonville and across Tech Parkway as part of this...
And I still want to keep the other one because that, as that, that tenant unit builds out.
Agreed.
The one at, the midway, the midway point at Tech Parkway.
Back, yeah, back here.
Right. Do you, do you know if they've made any intentions of being able to, are they going to develop both these properties at the same time? They're going to clear them all? They're going to build them all? They're going to park them, lot them all? Or is this going to be a phased approach?
I'm not sure about the site clearing. It could happen all at once through just an early grading plan. My impression is the Wawa is going to come first, but I don't know if they're going to go ahead and, and clear the entire site and, and prepare it for development or, or just the, the portion they need to up here.
Okay. Do we know how much they're going to need to widen Furnace Road in order to get a dedicated left-hand turn lane there?
They, they actually don't need to widen it. There's an existing striped-off area in Furnace, and it was, it was there, I assume, to accommodate this very turn lane because you also have a, a signal head that accommodates that turn lane as well that's existing.
Okay. All right. So, when will that turn lane, according to the, in the process of building, when will that turn lane be available to be used? Is there a timing associated with that turn lane and the development of the site?
It would be provided with the development, the initial development of the site. As far as exact timing, such as, you know, prior to occupancy permit or something like that...
Something along those lines.
Yeah, usually VDOT makes them put it in before they can start.
I wasn't sure if that was something we...
At site plan, that's when that's all hashed out.
Or whether or not we have some say over that.
It's, it's not clearly specified in the proffers, you know, when it needs to be done by, but it would be in conjunction with that initial site plan. So, it would be, it would be bonded, bonded improvement since it's in the right way.
Okay.
All right. I think, are we done with him?
Yeah, I think we're done with him.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gooch. Okay, so now we will allow the applicant to come up and give their presentation. Mr. Payne, would you like to come up? I know you're going to have all the questions, all the answers to all the questions.
I try. And I was writing notes real quick because we were trying to figure out where that second crosswalk was across Tech Park and then the crosswalk across Garrisonville. So, we're trying to get our arms around exactly where that is so we can, we can figure that out, too. So, if we can do it, if it's not an issue or any sort of hindrance from VDOT going across Garrisonville, we can certainly do it. So, it's not going to be an issue. And we can't have a Wawa without the right turn lane being built beforehand. So, that will be, that will be, certainly be built. You're talking about the right turn lane off of Garrisonville?
No, I'm talking about the left turn lane off of Furnace Road.
Oh, okay.
I understand, I understand the right turn lane.
Yeah, we, we can, we can absolutely make that part of the initial, for the initial infrastructure that we put in place. We can certainly identify that.
Okay.
Yeah, not a problem, so. But we do want to get our arms around the other two pieces because I'm a little confused looking at the plaque.
Yeah, because it's, it's very walkable, and I know Vista Woods calls me monthly wanting sidewalks, so I, I know they're going to want to crosswalk there to be able to get to the Wawa.
So, you're talking about a crosswalk across Garrisonville Road to Tech Parkway connection?
Yeah, from where the Sheetz is, all the way across to Wawa, because a lot of those kids walk out of Vista Woods and come across. So, you'll get a lot more business that way.
Is there a, is there no crosswalk there now? Is that what you're saying? Or there's one halfway or...
There is a crosswalk light. There's no hashes in the street in, on Garrisonville Road, but there is the button that you can push only on the Sheetz side, but not on the other. So, you can get across the street, but you can't get back.
So, there is a crosswalk, but it's no button on our side, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Gotcha. Okay. We'll take a look at that.
At least that's what the brewery owner said.
Okay. All right. Sorry for the confusion. I was, we, we just couldn't find it on the plaque, so sorry about that. Thank you, Chairman, Madam Chairman, and other members of the planning commission. My name is Charlie Payne with the law firm Herschel Fleischer, representing the applicant. Thank you for your time this evening. We do have a quick PowerPoint, and after I get through that, I'll answer any, any other questions you may have as well. And just real quick, I'll get to that when we get to the GDP about the easement question to the property to the north. I think there was a question about that property being able to get to 610. Just going to give you a real quick introduction on Wawa, and I do have a representative here today. I'm sure you all know who Wawa is, but if there's some, there's some details here, some, some specifics I didn't know that I thought were important to provide. They are a privately-held company. They sell about 1.9% of their fuel in the US. They're ranked Ford's Top 25 for private companies. They do hire lots of folks. They have 33,000 associates and 864 stores in four states. They also, as part of their employment process, have a tuition reimbursement program maxed at $52.50 annually. They have a college graduate leadership program, medical benefits, wellness programs, and top recruitment contributions of an employer, 401K, and other of their associates. And they do have a recognition and care program as well. And I'm sure you're familiar with the stores, and here's an outside version. We also have obviously proffered our renderings. Wawas is a significant convenience center. It does contribute taxes and jobs to the community. Again, there's 2,800 associates across the state, there's 87 stores, and the Commonwealth wage, corporate, and real estate tax revenues are generated from these sites. And as you know, Wawas, they're very busy. Again, Wawa expands to more jobs, more positive economic benefits. They invest about $6 million in each store. Every new Wawa takes about six months to build and create about 50 to 70 construction jobs as part of that process. And each new Wawa does create 50 permanent jobs. Wawa does employ many Virginia-based engineers in constructing new stores, and obviously they employ locally the folks who work there. And likewise, they use local suppliers. They also are very much community-involved. They have a significant food donation program in Virginia alone. They provided 513,000 pounds of food and 436,000 meals. Local community giving, you'll see at the bottom there, the Stafford County Volunteer Fire Department was a recipient of their local giving. Just real quick into the application. The property does consist, as staff noted, and Brian, thank you very much for your presentation, does consist of two parcels that consist about totaling 6.05 acres, and that's for the total project, the two projects. And that's for the total project, the two projects here. One, there's probably... There's a proffer amendment here, and there's an SUP for the Wawa. It's currently Zone B2. The purpose of the proffer amendment was to make some modifications to the already-approved rezoning, which was 00822 in February of 2008. And also to allow this parcel to be developed for a convenience store and fuel station instead of a bank. So, a CUP is required for this, the vehicle fuel sales. You're very familiar with the area, as I can tell because you know where the crosswalks are, and I don't. It's in a Rock Hill Voting District. It's also located at the corner of Garrisonville and Tech Parkway. And we've gone through who the surrounding property owners are. Most of the property owners around us are B2 and are planned for commercial zoning uses. Comp Plan is project of staff note. It's consistent with the Comp Plan. It's designated within the Suburban Future Land Use category. It's also in a commercial node. It is also within our USA. So, here is the GDP. I think there was a question regarding access... Was it access... Sorry. I think there was access... I give up on this. So, there was access questions, I guess, from the property to the north trying to get to 610. If there's an easement of record, we can't block access. So, that will have to be addressed. The title work that we've done to this point, there is none that we are aware of. So, any sort of development, improvements, infrastructure, et cetera, we cannot block access for anyone who has a recorded easement. I will note that to the east, we have an interparcial connection. So, I'm not sure which property, who owns the property in the back here to the north. My understanding is it could be the same person who owns property to our east. But there is an interparcial connection there. If you can see... You know how to work this thing for me so I can actually mark this. I'm gonna get the... I wanna get the... I can't get that. I wanna be able to mark this area right here, and I can't do it.
Is there some tool you have open over there?
I thought it was me, so... Anyway, so there's an interparcial connection there to the east that goes through the site and ends up on Tech Parkway. I don't know if you guys can see that or not, but it winds through the project. Any questions on the access easement issues while I'm here?
The property owner hasn't reached out to you and they weren't notified?
We met somebody out front just a little while ago, and I'm not sure if she's here. Is that you?
Okay. I'm sure she'll be able to talk when...
Yeah. So, if there is a recorded easement, I mean, one, this property to our north has access immediately to Tech Parkway. We can't landlock... Well, we're not landlocking our property. We can't block access that's of record. So, if the issue is, can I get north to south, get to 610, we can't block it. So, that's the legal requirement.
Let me just... I'm sorry, because I know a lot of people probably haven't been to these before. So, he'll give his presentation, then we'll open up the public hearing, and you'll be able to speak at that time. And then he'll be able to address anything that you brought up at that point, okay? All right. Go ahead, Mr. Payne.
Yeah, so here are the elevations for the project, which have been proffered. Transportation, as noted by staff, access to the project will be a right-in-only entrance from Garrisonville and a full movement access to Tech Parkway, as you are aware. TIA shows that development is not anticipated to have any negative impacts on exiting, impact on existing traffic at the location. The TIA did make recommendations for a right-turn lane extension of 100 feet. And then the existing strip buffer lane on the Furnace Drive will be restriped to provide a northbound left turn lane with 200-foot of storage, which will improve that intersection from D to C. So, actually, those improvements will actually benefit that intersection. No impacts on schools. Fire and Rescue Station 14 is located just 1.2 miles to the southeast of the site. And will have no impacts on parks. Just real quick, the overview of the proffer changes. The commercial building in the back to the north will be 45,000 square feet versus 60. Sidewalk widths are larger from five feet to six. We've also added, as you know, a crosswalk across Tech Parkway. We've updated, obviously, the uses for purposes of the project, replacing the convenience center with the bank. And the office retail will be in the back. We've added the entrance improvements, as we just discussed. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Randall?
We talked about the Tech Parkway crosswalks, right? You're still working on where those crosswalks need to be?
Well, we know where one's supposed to be because that's the one we're supposed to put in this in the proffers. The other one...
Which is where? Which is near the back?
Which is near the back. Right sort of the middle, if you will, where the office and the Wawa side is.
Okay, so that's the only one that you're proffering?
Right.
Correct?
Right.
Okay. Yeah.
Right. I mean, Brian made a comment which surprised us that there's actually one closer up to the intersection, which we don't have shown on our GDP. Is that correct?
Well, is there one there? Or is there a discussion about whether we need to add that one?
Is there one there?
As part of the proffer?
I don't have an... Can we pull up an aerial?
I mean, there's no sidewalks on the other side of Tech Parkway back where we show the crosswalk is where we're tying into the existing sidewalks across.
I don't know if it's there or not today. I don't think...
Well, if you go back to the aerial that you had, that you showed just a minute ago, you'll see the lines. I didn't see anything there, so... If you look up at Tech Parkway, it doesn't look like there's any lines on that road.
There are no lines anywhere.
So... Okay. Well, I guess the discussion then is, are we okay building that without a crosswalk across the street? And when, if we get sidewalks up there, when will we ever be in a position to put... Who will ever be in a position to put a crosswalk at that location if we don't do it now?
Right. So, two things. One, can we put a walk signal on our side to cross to the Sheetz side, let's say? And whether we would build a crosswalk, which I'm sure we'd be open to, which would be further to the south of the site?
Yes.
Across to the other side of Tech Parkway? Sure. Sure we would. So, we can add that as a proffer. I don't think that's gonna be a problem for us. Unless my client tells me no.
All right. Any other questions? Because I'm sure other people have questions.
No, let's get the public hearing.
And then we remember, we went to public hearing. Go ahead, Mr. Randall.
Yeah, Mr. Payne.
Yes, sir.
In reference to, I think, Mr. Randall's question, when y'all grade, are you gonna grade the whole thing out as far as the building behind it?
Well, the building behind it will be demoed prior to the issuance...
No, I'm sorry. When you get ready, the two-story building that is set for that, are y'all gonna grade the whole thing? Or are you just gonna wait till you get a tenant for that?
You know, there's two owners here, so I don't know what the other owner's plans are. So, right now, we don't have that.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
But the building in the older building in the back will be demoed before we're able to get a permit for the Wawa.
Okay.
All right. Some things I want you to consider before we open up the public hearing, just my concerns. I know we already discussed proffering the full fuel fill-up between outside of the hours of 5:00 and 9:00, Wednesday through Sunday, adding the crosswalk across Garrisonville Road so that it goes both ways, and across at the north part of Tech Parkway there, and the midway where you're already proffering. And then the trees that you have, it says 50 plant units, 10-foot wide, 50% evergreen. Just making sure that if you're not willing to proffer the hours of fuel fill-up, that it's full-blown evergreens, just blocking that sightline and noise mitigation for the gas fill-ups. And then lastly, I don't know if you can proffer this, but the Wawa off of Route 3, I'm just trying to look for a way to set this apart from the Sheets, has that no ethanol gas, the stuff that you put in lawn mowers and four-wheelers, and you have to drive all the way to Spotsylvania to get it? Is there any way that this Wawa can carry that type of no ethanol gas?
What was the first one on time limits? I'm sorry.
Outside of the hours of 5:00 to 9:00, Wednesday through Sunday. So, those would be the only times for not getting truck fill-ups.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Just to make clarification, is that fuel deliveries?
Yeah, I'm sorry, fuel deliveries.
Thank you.
Not articulate. Okay. You good?
Thanks.
All right. So, at this point, we'll open up the public hearing. So, if you are here to speak on either... On the agenda that you have, it'll be item number three and four. But for this purposes, it's item one and two. It's on the proffer amendment and the conditional use permit. You'll have three minutes to address the commission. We're not allowed to get into a back-and-forth conversation, but you can come up, express your concerns, ask your questions, and then we'll have them answered for you after. When the yellow light comes on, you have 60 seconds left. When the red light comes on, please conclude your comments. And when you come up to the podium, please state your name, address, and the district that you reside. Does anybody care to speak? Yep, this is where you come up for the Wawa.
Hi, my name is Janet Bridwell. I originally owned the property in the back that this Wawa was gonna own. I was being asked to request to be built on. And I am the person that owns the property in the back, and I am worried that it is going to be landlocked. And I wanted to make sure that we have access from the Parkway onto the property.
From... Oh, okay. Keep going.
From the Parkway onto this property that is located in the back. And at the time, I sold the property to 610 Investments back in 2006. And there is supposed to be an easement. There was an agreement that they were gonna put in an agreement of an easement in the driveway so I could get back to the back property. So, somewhere out there, there is supposed to be an agreement of an easement. So, that is my concern, that I do not want the property landlocked.
What was your address for this?
My address was 1170 Garrisonville Road, which is the property that is being requested, this request for Wawa going on.
Okay. Is that all?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come up and speak? On the Wawa? Going once, going twice? Okay, looks like nobody's jumping at the bit. So, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing on this. So, at this point, I'll let the applicant come back up and address the landlock issue and any other questions that the commission might have.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. What was your question?
Yeah, no, no. Her question was the landlock issue. She says at some point in time, she believes there was an easement because she was the original property owner for where the property that you guys are seeking to purchase, that she sold to the Union Bank. And so, she said there's supposed to be an easement, and she's very concerned that she'll be landlocked on that back parcel.
We will talk to her afterwards and get her information, and we'll confirm with our title work that we did, just to see if there is any. If there is one of record, we have to maintain the easement. We can't unilaterally vacate an easement.
And so, what if there's not?
Like I said, there's access across... We need, one, need to find out where a property is. Hasn't been real clear to me where it's located.
Okay.
But there is an interparcial connection across the property, the Tech Parkway. My understanding is she owns property to our east and behind us, is what I understand. We were talking in the hallway. So, I will get more information from her exactly where her property is, and then we'll kind of walk through that process. But if there's an easement of record, we can't vacate it by ourselves. We have to honor the easement.
Mr. Randall?
Were you talking about an easement from Garrisonville or from Tech Parkway? The easement would probably be from Garrisonville?
From what I'm hearing, she thinks there's an easement that goes from behind our property to Garrisonville across the site. That's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
But again, I need this, one, know what parcel she owns, and then, two, we'll be able to determine from our title examination whether it's...
Mr. Harvey, would there be any way of being able to document that from the county or be able to look that up on the county records to see?
Commissioner Randall, what Mr. Payne is referring to is looking at the county's land records, what's been recorded in the courthouse. That would be the only documents the county would have. If there was some other written agreement that was not part of a recorded easement or some other type of mechanism, we wouldn't have access to it.
All right, thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Anybody else? Am I right?
We'll be more than happy to, once we do our research, to... Again, I need to sit down with the property owner, figure out where she lives, where her property is, and then confirm whether or not there is any easements of record.
Do you have any questions on my left? Anybody? Okay. So, I gave you, I think, four things.
Right.
Where did you guys settle on that? Or do you need more time?
Well, I mean, there are a couple of things. One, limiting the hours in which they can fuel or bring in fuel for their tanks. It's gonna be very difficult for them because of the fact it's a need. It's a need on... So, when the store needs it, it's when it orders it. So, it would put us at a competitive disadvantage if we weren't able to continue that process. So, that's a big, big issue for them. Adding more landscaping, we'll have to take a look at it and see how that would work. We don't want to block visibility from the site so that it also creates a marketing disadvantage. We do have a Sheets across the street. So, I think the latter part of the landscaping is probably the better opportunity for everybody, but we have to take a look at it. I mean, I just can't shoot from the hip tonight on that one.
And the crosswalks?
I think we're fine with the crosswalks. We were just looking at it from the aerial. We're just not sure where that crosswalk would go because there's, you know, there's right out, left in, and then a right in. So, we gotta be careful as to where that location's gonna be, make sure it's in a safe area. We'll get with the county to make sure we can identify that.
I mean, Mr. Payne, on another note, if she said that there's a crosswalk... I mean, there's a button on the other side where the Sheets is. I think that would be VDOT's responsibility to make sure that... I don't know why they wouldn't have put a button on the other side.
They may very well. We can figure that out, though.
Because that was not smart.
I mean, that's a different crosswalk. She's talking about the one that goes across Tech Parkway from our site to the other side.
Right, but I'm talking about the second one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's the one, too.
We'll check into that to see if... Just simply just ask VDOT for that safety, that traffic security.
And then the no ethanol gas? I mean, that might not be a good proffer because obviously, as gas changes, we don't wanna do, you know, put that in your proffers for 20 years from now. But it would be really great. You can come up. Because I'm gonna get another gas station.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Jeb Bell, a real estate engineer with Wawa. Happy to take your questions tonight. I'd love to sell e-free here. I just have to do my due diligence and check that we're allowed to. So, if we're allowed to, I would sign up for that.
What would prohibit you? I'm just curious.
So, certain counties don't allow e-free.
That would be crazy to me.
It's environmental.
The airport sells it.
Yeah, so like I said, if it's allowed, I just...
And if you're not, you come back to me because we'll fix that.
Okay, perfect. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. They might be exempt.
I feel like you answered it.
Okay, so, Mr. Payne, we're thinking you guys wanna hash all this out, especially with the property owner in the back, over the next couple of weeks. And then we'll come... You can come back to the next Planning Commission meeting. That'll still be able to get you to the board before November. Are you good with that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we can still get to the board before November 5th? Is that the...
Six. November 5th is election day.
If we can do that, yeah, then we can wait two weeks and hash out.
Okay. Mr. Harvey?
Madam Chairman, the last board meeting for this year that they'll be taking land use issues is October 15th. So, unfortunately, we would not have time to schedule it if there's a deferral.
That's the last they're doing land... They're not even doing it at their end-of-October meeting? Oh, that is their end of October.
That's their second meeting.
They could waive their bylaws, though, right?
If the board decided to, they could as well. Elsewise, this item would come back to the board in January.
Planning Commission could also make recommendations for the matters that you've requested going forward to the board, and it'd give us some time to figure it out as well.
Okay. For me, the landlock issue is the big one because I don't want her to be landlocked. I feel like that's a big deal.
We can't legally landlock her.
Yeah. I'm just worried that the deed probably didn't record it, and then she's kind of stuck with no access.
We're showing existing easements across the site, like I said. But I don't know where... Have to figure out where her property is and whether she's a beneficiary of that. But again, we can't landlock her. Just wanna make that real clear.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Is everybody done with their questions? So, I'm not gonna make a motion on it. I'll let you guys make a motion based on that feedback. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Charlie, I need you back up if you could.
We're showing... Just so you know, we are showing access from adjoining property. It could be her.
Okay, all right. I think there's ways to work around that, especially if you have to go to the north of the property off of Tech Parkway.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. There's ways to get back in there. It's just a matter of... Absolutely, there's ways to get back in there. It's just a matter of whether it's from Garrisonville or whether it's off Tech Parkway. So the only, the only people that are associated or close to this would be the people across the street at Sheetz or the people across the street in that retail area there.
Across Tech Parkway.
Across Tech Parkway. Obviously, we don't want to keep people from knowing that there's a Wawa there. So I think it'd be appropriate probably from Garrisonville to leave it where it's at, to leave the buffer where it's at. The concern is those people who are in the retail across, across Tech Parkway. And, you know, maybe that's not, the people that are patrons to that location may not want to be a part of gas trucks from five to nine if we can't keep that there. So I'm not, I don't want to disadvantage Wawa from, first of all, once people know there's a Wawa, you could put a 10 high-foot fence and it would still go. But is there a way we can increase the density of those plants on Tech Parkway to make more of a buffer from those people who are across the street who are patronizing those developments?
You can come up and address the commission because we'd rather you be on the record anyway.
I don't, yeah, I don't want.
I think that makes sense and having visited the area, I think that would be nice for them. Though I think the right thing to do for those neighbors to, you know, we can kind of preserve their quality of the experience that they're trying to have for their patrons. And I think.
They are, and that was their concern, especially now that they've got an outside dining area, it's outside area.
Yeah, so I guess we can define exactly the limits of that, but the intent would be to screen kind of, you know, our activities from.
Yes.
From Tech Parkway.
Without, I don't, I don't want a fence, I don't want a big high fence, but if we could do something with the landscaping such that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes, and it would be along that side, the Tech Parkway side. I don't know, Brian, do, is there, is there something we can proffer now? Do we, do we change, only because, you know, if we're trying to make a decision tonight, we probably need to work through some of these things tonight. Is it a increase the density from 50 plant units to 75 plant units to 100 plant units? Is it to change it from 50% to 75% evergreens? What would be the solution to screening that so that we can put it in the proffers and we can move forward?
Yes, Mr. Randall. First, I'd have to check to see what exactly the planting requirements are. That would be considered a street buffer, I believe, which is less dense than a transitional buffer. But I don't know exactly what the plant unit requirements are offhand, so I'd need to look into that and make a recommendation from there. I suppose it could be approached generally to state that you, you have to provide twice the number of required plant, plant units that would normally be required or something to that effect.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. F. Talon.
Since there's a CUP, why can't we put provisions in, not necessarily relying on the proffers, but the CUP conditions or a CUP condition?
Yeah, good idea.
Either way.
Yeah.
But again, I'd have to research that or, like I said, if they're comfortable, we could put in something to the effect of twice the normal required plant units or something to that effect.
For that one side.
Yeah.
With that, along Tech Parkway within that stretch, correct.
All right, thanks, Mr. Gooch. The applicant, go ahead.
I mean, as far as committing to do, I mean, I'm committing to work with the county staff, but I mean, if he says and it writes in double the plannings and there's not physically enough space, what are we going to do? Do we have to come back for an amendment to the CUP?
So understanding what your engineer said, and I don't have your name, sir, I'm sorry. Okay, understanding that's our goal, where can we work with staff to make sure that goal is met? Do we, how do we proffer it such that the goal is met, but we maintain the, I can't get 100 units in there or I have to do 70? How do we work this out so that I can change the profit?
Just give us, give us a sentence.
Mr. Zaraf had a good idea. We could have a condition stating that any outdoor seating area that, well, this use shall be screened from view from any adjacent outdoor seating areas. So at such time that that does come in, then that would be required. I suppose it could be a situation where it needs to be added after the fact. I don't know how that would be handled, but. Or it could be, it could be that it just needs to be screened from view from, from that use, that commercial building across Tech Parkway.
I'm comfortable with that and I think they would be too.
Okay.
I don't think we need to make it more complicated. I think that that's fine.
I agree. I just wanted to make sure.
We're talking about screening from the fuel tank area to the outdoor seating, correct? We're not talking about the entire facility. So make sure we're clear about that. This is a limited area, right?
It's just, yeah, where the trucks would pull up to do the fuel. That's really it. Because it kind of, just the way that it worked out, ends up being right across from where they just built an outdoor patio and I think they have intentions of trying to do some type of outdoor fireplace and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, the tanks don't work on the other side because then you create a safety problem.
And they understand that and I think they are very excited about the opportunity and being a good neighbor with you guys. They just, you know, they were there first and wanted to make sure that this didn't have any negative impacts on their business.
Okay, just want to make sure going forward is limited to that particular area.
Yep.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to that we approve CUP, let's see, RC 191-52788. Reclassification of Wawa Tech Parkway proffer amendment.
Okay.
Second.
Did you want to make that addition a part of your motion?
So that's, so that's for the reclassification, so I guess for discussion, my question would be the additional proffers regarding the crosswalks. Do they, they need to be added in with the reclassification language, don't they? Or would they be under the CUP?
I think you could probably do it either way, but the easier way to do it, in my opinion, would be the CUP.
Okay, got it. So we're good, I think we're clear on the reclassification. All right, so there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner English to approve the reclassification of the Wawa Tech Parkway, RC 191-52788. And a second by Mr. McPherson. Any discussion, Mr. English?
No, ma'am.
Mr. McPherson?
Nope.
Any other discussion from anyone else? All right, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion carries seven zero. Next item.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve CUP 191-52741 with the, the changes that we talked about as far as the landscaping around the fuel area and the, and the crosswalks.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll go over those in a second.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner English, a second by Commissioner Randall. And so the motion, just for the record, is to approve the conditional use permit for the Wawa Tech Parkway, CUP 191-52741 with the conditions that the gas underground tanks shall be screened from use from any outdoor adjacent seating areas. And in addition, they will provide crosswalks across the street from Garrisonville Road all the way over to Furnace and then crosswalks throughout Tech Parkway at the, at the north side or the top side along Garrisonville Road and then the midway point on Tech Parkway from their gas station all the way across to where the sidewalks are on Tech Parkway.
Madam Chair?
Correct.
Can I make one?
Of course.
Regarding, it's not the underground tanks that we want screened, it's the trucks that are delivering gas that we want screened, correct? Wherever those trucks are going to be located, it needs to be screened from the cross.
Fuel area.
Right, so I don't want it just be.
So the underground tank fueling area.
It should be the whole fueling area where those tanks, where those trucks are going to be stationed while they're delivering their gas. Should, is what I would be clear on.
Where they drop the fuel at.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, so motion by Commissioner, yes, Mr.? Yeah, go ahead.
As far as requiring the screening from the adjacent outdoor seating area, that might be problematic if this use develops first and the outdoor seating is not there yet.
It's already there.
It would, it is already there.
That's the whole problem with all this. It's already there.
I, I, I thought that was, I thought that was something that was.
No, they just built, literally two weeks ago.
I'm clear, thank you.
Madam Chairman.
They were like, you've got to be kidding.
We need to take Brian over for a beer.
Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner English, second by Commissioner Randall. Any discussion, Commissioner English?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Randall?
No, ma'am.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm just going to really quickly thank you guys for working with us on this. We are excited to welcome Wawa to the area. What, come on?
The screening is across Tech Parkway because Sheetz has outdoor seating areas as well, so just to make sure we're clear.
Okay, we'll make, yeah. Yep. We would like to welcome Wawa to the Rock Hill District. Before all of my constituents say just another gas station, I think they should see all the slides that you presented. I think I'm staring at economic development back there. We've had many conversations about how to bring more businesses to Rock Hill. And I do strongly believe that adding these additional uses will strengthen some of the economic viability in the Rock Hill District and help us bring in additional restaurants to the, the area where the neighborhood Walmart is. I did have some reservations about it, but it seems like we've been able to work through most of those this evening. So I want to thank you guys for your flexibility and hopefully you'll be able to bring that no ethanol gas. So we'll be able to capitalize on the fuel tax and all of the revenue that your store will be having and I think making sure that you hire local. And if I could just make one request, that you ensure that all of our public servants, police, fire and rescue in uniform, get free coffee. Your south, your stores on Route 3 and Butler Road are really good at that. I did a police ride along. But the store and Eustis on 610 did not, and I was appalled. But they didn't when I was there. So just make sure, because I want this to be a draw for our fire, rescue and police to make it out to Rock Hill more often. And so if you could just make it very clear to your staff. Okay, all right, everybody ready to vote? All right, tally the vote. All right, motion carries seven zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to items three and four, which are item number one and two on the agenda. The reclassification at Vista's at Ferry Farm and the conditional use permit Vista's at Ferry Farm. And for this, we recognize Mr. Mike Zaraf.
If I could have the computer, please? Okay, good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Mike Zaraf, the Planning and Zoning Department. This is a continued public hearing for project known as Vista's at Ferry Farm. It's a combination of zoning reclassification and conditional use permit, and I'll review both the application requests. So, and also part of this, I'm going to go over, since it's a continued public hearing, I'm going to go over some of the same information from the original public hearing. So this is a request to reclassify the property from A1 agricultural to the R5 age-restricted housing zoning district to develop up to 170 age-restricted multifamily dwelling units. Under the straight rezoning, that actually would permit only 106 age-restricted units. But the, the additional application, the conditional use permit application would allow an increased residential density of up to 24 units an acre, and that would allow the full 170 units that are being requested. The applicant is Doug Janney, Charlie Payne's the agent, and this is in the George Washington District. The, the original public hearing for this case was held on July 10th and deferred to address concerns raised at that time. This is a location and zoning map. The, there are five properties, five parcels subject to the application identified in the, in the blue outline. The overall area covers 7.1 acres. The property is located on the south side of Kings Highway and the north side of Naomi Road. The site's partially wooded. You have Claiborne Run located to the south of the property, the light blue line. There's also 100-year flood plain associated with Claiborne Run located on a portion of the site. The topography slopes downward from Kings Highway to Naomi Road. And some, there are some pocket wetlands located on the site as well. There are eight single-family dwellings located on the site off of Naomi Road. The exact age of the structures are unknown. They're older dwellings and some of the units are occupied and some are not. Other nearby uses include single-family residential dwellings along Naomi Road to the southwest, to the southwest and townhouse dwellings farther to the south off of Dairy Lane. This is a general development plan that depicts the layout of the proposed age-restricted multifamily units. Just a brief summary of the, of the plan. There's, the primary access to the development is via two entrance points off of Naomi Road. There would be no access directly off of Kings Highway due to the grade differences. The development includes two, three-story buildings. Those are shaded in, in orange. The proposed 170 dwelling units are equivalent to a density of 23.9 units per acre. As mentioned, the concurrent conditional use permit would be required to allow up to that many units. To achieve this density on this site, the applicant's proposing underground parking. The, the three-story building height is the maximum permitted in the R5 zoning district. Given the sloping conditions of site, the building will be terraced into the, into the hill and the underground parking will be exposed on the southern side or Naomi Road side of the site. The amenities include a pool and clubhouse located generally in between the two buildings. There are new changes to the plan since the initial public hearing. The applicant added a second vehicle access point to the underground parking. That's to the east building in the location of the red circle. And also added a potential alignment to the Belmont Ferry Farm Trail across the frontage of the site. That's the gray shaded line located along Naomi Road. At the last meeting, the commission had a few questions. They questioned if there are any other multifamily residential developments in the county with similar development density. Staff did identify one similar one, the Acquia 15 apartments in the town center at Acquia off of Route 1 up by Garrisonville Road. The apartments, they're on a seven-point acre portion of a larger 35-acre mixed-use development. The, the project includes 256 apartment units in several four-story buildings. There is surface parking in this complex. The immediate 7.8 acre area has a development density of 33 dwelling units per acre. When you account for the larger complex and development complex on the 35 acres, those apartments would equate to 7.3 dwelling unit per acre density. Staff did realize, yes?
The parking for those apartments, does, is that going to rely on some of the adjacent parking of the town center then? Because that doesn't look nearly enough parking.
No, that, they had to provide all the required parking and they do provide it.
Within the complex itself?
Yes.
All right.
We did also realize another project, the Gardens at Stafford, that is an age-restricted apartment complex. It's out by Mountain View High School and that's on property that was zoned R3. And that was kind of associated with the overall private partnership development that allowed for the development or the construction of the two schools out there. And that apartment complex is on a 5.8, 0.1 acre portion of that overall site. They have 150 dwelling units, so when you look at that immediate development area, that's 29 dwelling units per acre. But when that project came in, they accounted for the larger overall site. Commission also requested staff provide more background regarding vehicle trip generation for the age-restricted housing to determine if the traffic counts for residents who may still be working in these independent units are accounted for as opposed to projects that might have more retired occupants. In addition, they asked if there are any kind of VDOT studies that evaluated traffic generation from age-restricted communities that might help. Looking at the Institute of Transportation Engineers manual, the, what we refer to as the ITE manual, that includes different categories of age-restricted housing types from independent housing to assisted living. The proposed use utilizes senior adult housing attached land use category and estimated the number of trips. Staff did believe, does believe the applicant used the appropriate use category. We also talked to VDOT about that and they also felt that that was inappropriate, appropriate use and that the rates that are included in the ITE manual are appropriate. Also, we did, you know, talked to VDOT staff about any studies. They were not aware of any special studies for age-restricted housing. There was one other similar project, the, where the applicant for the villages at Green Bank, that recent rezoning. that recent rezoning, they did evaluate the traffic generation from the existing Celebrate at Del Webb development to provide a comparison to the ITE manual. And as part of their traffic analysis, they found that the peak hour rates were actually a little bit slightly below the rates cited in the ITE manual. Just a quick summary, as we went over this at the last meeting, the applicant's proposing several proffers that the development would be as depicted in the general development plan, limit the overall number of units to 170 age-restricted multifamily units. Architectural design would be in accordance with renderings that they've provided, require specific building materials to ensure fire safety, require cash contributions of $490 per unit, and that's specifically for public safety. Require covenants to ensure units are all age-restricted, and require the construction of the clubhouse and swimming pool amenities on the site. Limit vehicle access to two entrances off of Naomi Road. Establish the maximum building height of three stories, also requiring coordination with VDOT that they need to do to acquire additional right-of-way to make this project a reality. They did include some new proposed proffers. Includes requiring the construction of a portion of the Belmont Ferry Farm Trail across the frontage of the site, as I outlined. Also allowing the applicant to convert the multifamily residential units to condominium units at any time. Also limiting the number of vehicles allowed per residential unit to two vehicles per unit. And then also limiting occupancy to no more than two persons residing in any one-bedroom unit and no more than three persons residing in any two-bedroom unit at any one time. Regarding those last two proffers that I've highlighted in yellow, staff does not recommend the county accept these proffers. They would be difficult for the county to enforce. Also, because of that, the presence of the proffers may create unrealistic expectations for residents in the area, in the community, or the public in general. In addition, what we didn't include in the staff report, staff was also made aware that the last proffer may be in conflict with the state code. There's a provision that allows an owner or manager of property of a dwelling unit to restrict the maximum number of occupants to two persons per bedroom. So this proffer would actually be below that on an average basis.
Mike, I have a question for you, if I may. Speaking of the second item, allowing the applicant to convert multifamily residential units to condominium units, based on the laws and standards we have in Stafford County, how would that affect maintaining the property, keeping with any restrictions we have? Would there be any adverse or positive effects on how the property would be maintained? Would the HOA go away? I'm trying to figure out how would that affect the property itself, maintenance-wise?
In either situation, there's, my understanding is there's a requirement that they have to have a property, you know, property maintenance and some sort of management or condo association, depending on the specific situation and setup.
Okay. So would this be all units convert to condominiums at the same time, or would it be just a handful here and there converting from residential units to condos, so we'd have a mix?
I'd have to defer to the applicant how that might typically work. I guess it would be done all at once, but I don't know if, they could probably speak to that a little better as to how that typically might occur.
Okay. Thank you.
So just touching on the condition use permit portion of this project, again, it's a use permit to increase the residential density up from 15 to 24 units per acre. This, again, allows an increase of overall units from 106 to 170. The main intent of the use permit, or requiring a use permit for increased residential densities to ensure the development occurs in a manner that minimizes negative impacts on residents in or adjacent to the site. So this use permit would allow 64 additional dwelling units in the project. The greatest potential off-site impact would be the adjacent, to the adjacent single-family residences off of Naomi Road. Staff does note that the shape and conditions of the site require the structures be located to the eastern end of the site oriented more away from the single-family residences. This should limit somewhat the visual impacts. Staff notes that the three-story buildings are consistent with the height of other apartment buildings in Stafford and could be permitted without the use permit. As noted, the apartments are not permitted to be taller than three stories. Also, several conditions are being recommended to address fire safety, which would be reviewed in the proposed conditions. Here are the proposed conditions. You'd have the max limit of number of units. Also providing and maintaining an FPA 13 commercial fire sprinkler system and standpipe system for fire protection in all the multi-story buildings. At least one elevator with emergency power, basically having a generator provided in each of the buildings. Having only non-combustible exterior wall materials around at least the entire first level above grade on each of the buildings. So having stone or brick as opposed to some sort of siding or material that might be more combustible. Also, an emergency evacuation response plan being prepared and maintained at the complex. So overall evaluation, kind of reviewed this at the last meeting. There are many positives. It's generally consistent with the land use recommendations in the comp plan, except for the issue of the overall land use intensity. There's mitigation of public safety impacts through cash contributions that are considered reasonable. It's consistent with infrastructure phasing policies in the comp plan related to schools, parks, libraries and transportation. Site design should minimize visual impacts on nearby lower-intensity residential uses. Project is designed in a manner to minimize impacts to sensitive environmental resources. Building design is consistent with the architectural design recommendations in the comp plan. Also, the proposed conditions would help to ensure negative impacts are mitigated. A new positive is that the proffers would now, and the project would contribute to the potential alignment of the Belmont Ferry Farm Trail through this area. In negative aspects, the development intensity does exceed maximum density recommendations in the comp plan. Proposal is inconsistent with the comp plan policies regarding the dam break inundation zones, which discourages development in those zones. It's inconsistent with infrastructure phasing policies related to general government service deficits. Overall, staff is generally supportive of both the reclassification and the condition use permit. There are several positive aspects of the proposal, and although the project is in conflict with some of the comp plan recommendations, the conditions of the site and surrounding area serve to mitigate the negative impacts. For the condition use permit, staff support is subject to approval of the zoning reclassification first, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Zarath. Any questions to my left? Ms. Appicella? Oh. Mr. Bain?
No, go ahead.
I thought I saw your green light on, that's why.
Well, I have several questions, so you sure you don't want to go out? Do you have a picture of the apartment complex in your slide deck?
Yes.
Okay. Probably should have led with this question. Where do the proffers limit the number of bedroom types?
Number of bedroom types?
Right. One bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom?
There are no limitations.
So they could have four bedrooms per apartment in the absence of a proffer?
Suppose that could.
Okay. What's the maximum height for these apartment structures?
There is no maximum height in the R5 zoning district.
I'm not asking about the, I'm saying this apartment complex. What is the height of this apartment complex?
So, yeah, the general development plan mentions 55 feet. Talked to the applicant about that measurement and that number as it relates to, you know, you have this base, one side of the building would basically, you'd see three stories, and then the other side where it goes downhill, the backside, you'd have, basically, you'd see the three stories and then a lower level. The side facing Kings Highway Route 3, you'd see the three stories. That's going to be approximately 45 feet, according to the applicant. This side that you see, like in this top image, where there's the three stories and then the lower underground parking, where you have kind of four levels, that backside is going to be approximately 55 feet.
You call it below level parking. I call it below structure, underground parking. I call it below structure parking, because as I see it, it's above grade, the whole parking area. That level is above grade. Am I correct or incorrect?
You're not totally incorrect. It's half, on one side it is above grade, and the other, on the north side, it's below grade.
Okay. So this below structure parking was not in the original R5 concept proposed by the applicant in 2017, is that correct?
I don't recall if it was or was not.
Yeah, I mean, I've looked at the packages. It's one of the reasons why I asked to see when this came up to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors back in 2017. So there was no underground or below structure parking proposed back then. It does appear, when I look at the picture in front of me, that it adds another level to the structure. Am I incorrect? Regardless of whether we can debate, as we talk further, whether it's a story or not, it does seem to add another level to the structure.
It adds another level.
Why is it being included now? Why is it necessary?
I think it's going to be necessary to provide the amount of parking that would be required to obtain, also to get to the density that they're seeking, the number of units that they're seeking. They need to provide a certain amount of parking, and to do so, the way they're accommodating the parking is going below grade, below the structure.
And more than 50% of that parking is actually going to be under the building? Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you have the county code in front of you? Can you read the definition of a story to me?
Okay. Story is that portion of a building, other than a basement, included between the surface of any floor and the surface of the floor next above it. If there is no floor above it, the space between the floor and the ceiling above it.
Would you agree that this parking area is not a basement? I mean, you could read the definition of a basement. It's in the code as well. I've looked at it.
Yeah. Space within a building and located partially underground, having one-half or more of its floor-to-ceiling height above the average adjoining grade of the building, of which it is apart, and with a floor-to-ceiling height of 78 inches or more.
Okay. But even under a layman's perspective, or if we looked in the Webster's dictionary, one would consider where you park your car to be a basement. Is that a fair or an accurate description of what a basement is compared to a parking area?
I think I'd have to look into the overall issue, and I haven't thought about that.
I actually think it's kind of important. And so the reason I'm asking is because given the definition, and I've also looked at the definition of a parking garage, which is really temporary parking, where cars aren't parked there, you know, 24/7 or throughout the week. You can read that definition as well, but I don't think that's really an issue here. So given the definition of a story, and I mean a children's story, but a story in terms of a building, as it's defined in the county code, why is an entire level of this building that has an end floor and a ceiling not considered a story under the county's definition of a story?
My understanding is the area where the dwelling units are going to be located would be considered the three stories in this.
So let me give you a hypothetical. What if they decide to skinny this building down and have three parking levels below the apartments? That would, I mean, that would bring the building up to what, 70, 80 feet potentially? So you could have as many parking levels as you want and still not be considered a story, based on what may be the interpretation the county is considering at this point in time? Is that fair to say?
Good.
Is there anything like this in Stafford County, where you have a building, a residential building, with all the parking, not all the parking, but a significant amount of the parking below the structure? And I'm not talking about a house. I'm talking about an apartment complex. Do we have any apartment complexes in Stafford where this same situation exists?
There's the apartments in Celebrate, Virginia, they do have parking below the structure. It's not the same format as this. It's not common parking spaces all in one, with one travel aisle. Their setup involves separate parking garages that are underneath the structure. And then from those parkings, from those parking garage stalls, then there's direct access to the specific units.
Right, but it is a very, in my opinion, a very dissimilar set of circumstances when you compare the, and I don't know that those apartments necessarily had a story maximum, at least a three-story maximum. Is that?
I'd have to go to that, look at that zoning district, and they may be more associated with a building height requirement, but I'd have to check.
Madam Chairman, I have more questions, but I don't want to dominate the conversation if somebody else wants to start.
Okay. So I would say, can we take a quick hiatus from these questions? Because I know we have someone from the Fire Marshal's Office here that we requested, and I know he probably wants to get home to his family. So if we want to address any fire and rescue questions, I'm going to ask him to come up at this time, and that way we can ask him whatever questions we had for him. Thank you, Mr. Zarath, and then we'll probably bring you back up. Come on down. It's Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Andrew Milliken, fire protection engineer. Happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Mr. Bain?
Yes, sir. The height of the buildings, if a fire were to occur on that third floor or fourth floor, depending on how it's defined, would your equipment have any difficulty reaching that height from the adjoining driveway?
No. The height that was being discussed here is well within the capabilities of the apparatus. It is also important to note that they are proposing to provide a standpipe system, which is similar to, it's a hose system that can be utilized to fight the fire from within the inside of the building, like we would do in a high-rise scenario for multi-story.
Okay. Suppose, just out of dreaming about this or having a nightmare, suppose the fire started in the parking garage. Automobile fire of some sort, gas explosions, et cetera, moved on up into the building. Would the access to those standpipes be blocked?
They, well, can't speak directly to your hypothetical, but in general, the standpipes would be available in the parking garage as well as those upper floors. So those resources would be available, as well as the fire sprinklers that would be above, as well as in the parking garage area.
Yeah, my understanding about standpipes is that they're generally dry. Is that true?
There's a variety of different styles. In this case, we would probably, more than likely, these would be a wet standpipe, which would have the water readily available.
All right. That's good.
Where's your closest fire ladder apparatus?
For this location, often we will have mutual aid assistance from the city of Fredericksburg. So that is more than likely the closest apparatus. We also have a aerial apparatus at the Berea Station, which is not the closest fire station to this location, but is further on down 17.
And can you remind me if that's staffed volunteer, or is that?
That is a career, primarily career station.
That might become an issue, too, when they start working Chatham Bridge.
Certainly, absolutely.
Thank you.
And you know work taking a ladder truck up north.
That work would probably be finished before the apartments are occupied.
Is VDOT doing it? Because probably not.
That's true. Another scenario that occurred to me, hurricane hits, Naomi Road floods. Both of the access driveways for this site are within Both of the access driveways for this site are within the floodplain boundaries. Would your equipment be able to float down the road and then climb up out of the water?
I know you guys had Humvees. I didn't see those.
I'm, I'm just, you know.
So we do have resources available for emergencies and flooding situations, conditions. I think I would point to two different components. One is that we also have existing infrastructure in that vicinity, the nursing home. That would be of concern if that was the situation. So we would have heightened reason to be involved with making sure that we have access to not only to this site, but also to that resource. But I think primarily that was the reason that we had recommended that they have an emergency plan in place that is a condition, is one of those items on the conditional use permit, so that they are able to be self-sustaining for 72 hours. We hope that that would not be the case, but that is something that's specifically in the conditional use permit.
Okay.
Mr. Appicella, did you have a question?
I do, Madam Chairman. I'm not sure, Andrew, if you can speak to these, but I'm hoping you can. So when the board approved the new R5 zoning district in 2017, two weeks later, they clearly indicated they wanted to adopt design standards specifically for senior apartments and presumably part of the reason for doing that is because they wanted to address safety issues. And safety issues go beyond just say a fire, in my opinion. So have any standards been adopted with relationship to senior apartments, as far as you know?
I am not aware. I could defer to other county staff if they are aware of anything.
Okay. That notwithstanding, from your experience or your knowledge about the differences between a regular family-style apartment and a senior apartment or senior living situation, where obviously you have older folks and one of the primary incidents that happen to older folks is falls. And I think I read in, in previous information, when this item was considered back in 2017, that while seniors make up 13% of the population, 30% of the fire rescue calls are from seniors and a lot of that is because of falls. So would, is it, is it fair to say that there are other things that one might need to put into a senior-style apartment complex? Again, where you can't restrict the maximum age, starts at 55, you could get to 75, 85 or older. Such things as wider hallways for walkers and wheelchairs and scooters. My dad had a scooter and I got to tell you, it didn't work very well in our, in the house that they had originally built. Also anti-slip and fall features such as grab bars and walk-in showers or tubs. Are those, I, I don't know everything that needs to be considered because again, to my, to my knowledge, we did not develop those standards for senior apartments despite being given that direction from the board of supervisors. And it was this specific proposal that triggered the call for that, those regulations.
Sure. Yeah, I have not aware of any current regulations to that effect. Certainly, you know, taking a look at those hazards, you know, could be, is certainly important. We, from the fire, fire and rescue department, had, did not provide any specifics to that degree or to that level, talking about slips and falls or grab bars, things of that nature. Those are items that would be regulated by the building code. However, that's not to say that they would be required of this particular project. In fact, a project such as this, that's, that's restricted to 55 and over, from a building code perspective, for the most part, meets the standard requirements that would be required of any apartment complex. It does not have a significant amount of increased standards. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, but.
I, I, I think there is a difference, but this is one of those situations where I, I think we don't know where we don't know because we haven't been fully informed about what unique sets of circumstances or measures need to be put in place to mitigate the kind of things that could happen in a senior life situation. By my count, there could be as many as 250 people per apartment building. And, and the way I came up with that number is there are 43 one-bedrooms with up to two people and 42 two-bedrooms, which could have up to four, four people, notwithstanding the proffer that was mentioned. And, and now I, I understand that there is no proffer that limits the number of bedrooms, so it could be even more. But my real concern is you got 250 people in an apartment complex where there might be a hazard situation and there's only one required elevator. If you've got a bunch of 70-year-olds in an apartment building, is one elevator going to be enough?
Yeah, that, that requirement regarding the elevators or how many elevators would be required is something that's regulated by the building code, by the building official.
So it makes no distinction between regular-style apartments and senior apartments?
They're, they're.
Again, I think older folks are going to be a little less mobile and not able to walk down three flights of stairs necessarily in a situation like that. Plus it's going to be kind of a scary situation. So, you know, everybody's kind of running out, trying to, to make their way out of the building. Again, I'm concerned that whether one elevator is really sufficient.
That certainly is, I mean, I can, I can just speak to.
Hey, I'm a senior now too.
As far as adequacy, I mean, the, the building codes, the requirements that we enforce kind of speak to those minimum levels. There's always the opportunity to ask for above that and to provide that if, if necessary.
Okay, thanks, thanks for being here tonight. I appreciate it.
And I just have one last question. In your opinion, is fire and rescue fully staffed and capable of handling 170 more additional units down there? And not increasing call time and ISO ratings?
Certainly that any development, including this one, would have impact to that. And we are not fully staffed 100% of the time. You see that in our annual, our monthly reports. We do the best we very, we can with what we have.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. All right. Mr. Appicella, I knew you have more questions for Mr. Zaraf.
I, I do, I apologize. Mike, I think you're prepped for this, but what's the zoning for the townhouses at Shockport? I don't remember the exact name of that townhouse development. Chatham.
You're referring to Shockport?
Yes.
Neighborhood, yeah, that's, the zoning is R2.
And how many, how many townhouse units are there?
There are 72.
And what's the density at Shockport?
That is 3.4 dwelling units per acre.
Okay. Is there anything like this proposed apartment complex anywhere nearby that townhome development?
Not in Stafford.
Okay. And at 15 units per acre, that would be roughly four and a half times the density of the Chatham townhouses. Is that right?
Right.
And at 24 units, it would be seven times the density at Shockport?
Yes.
You, you mentioned the Akai 15 apartments as a comparable. I've got a picture of it here. It's a four-story apartment complex. Do you know what the height is?
Yeah, the height of that is. That is 56 feet.
So this at its max is 55 feet. So at, at their maxes, they're roughly comparable in size. Four-story versus what is so-called a three-story in this case.
Yes.
And the Akai 15, that's, that's part of a mixed-use development, right?
Correct.
And there are no mixed-use developments near, near the Vista property, right?
Right.
And it's also not part of a TGA?
Correct.
Do, do we know why the board decided to limit the number of stories to, to three for R5 developments?
That's consistent, I think, with the, my understanding is it's consistent with the comp plan recommendation in suburban areas that there not be more than, buildings not be more than three stories tall.
Okay. And, and what's your sense of the average size of a three-story apartment building?
I think, you know, it's going to be more, more so likely, you know, if you had a level perfect site, it'd be more like 45 feet in height.
Okay. Could the applicant pursue a lower level of multifamily development on this seven-acre parcel?
They could.
So if they did R3, for example, they could have gotten roughly speaking 49 development units?
R3, um, yes, yes.
Okay. And how about commercial rezoning on that particular parcel? I mean, there are some other commercial areas close by, right?
They could pursue that.
So I'm just going to ask one last kind of catch-all question. Sorry. From your perspective, given your vast experience here, Mike, and knowing what you know about this site itself, and I, I have to use this term, it's got some warts and errors. It requires several retaining walls, right? I think part of the property would be very difficult to build on. Is it, is it an optimal site for a senior citizen apartment complex, given its location, topography, and other issues such as distance to the closest grocery store, which I think is the Walmart, probably a mile or so away, not within walking distance?
Sure, there's, yeah, there's definitely kind of site challenges with, you know, the, the topography, but you know, the applicant's still going to have to, you know, provide the, the parking, you know, make it work with, by, by, with the use of the retaining walls and the, as far as the proximity, you know, there, there is, you know, trail network coming through that will provide, you know, with the future improvements to the Chatham Bridge, there may be much more pedestrian access to get people down to downtown Fredericksburg, which has a lot of, you know, shops and restaurants and, and the grocery store is not that far away either to, to where the Walmart is.
At 55, I wouldn't want to walk from there to the Walmart.
Well, I'm not suggesting somebody would walk there, just for, as far as.
But you have, it's, and to go back to the, the notion, it's not a mixed-use development. There's no grocery store on site. It's not part of a TGA. It's its own apartment complex unto itself, so.
And, and I, and again, this is independent senior living. So the intent is that the, the residents here are still mobile. They're, you know, some are working, they're driving, you know, so it's not like assisted living where.
Unlike the ones off Route 17 though. I'm sorry, I just had to.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? I think we're good. Yeah, thank you. All right, at this point, the applicant want to come up and address the planning commission?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and all the members of the planning commission. Charlie Payne, I represent the applicant. Mr. Appicella, I think you've used all your questions for the rest of the year.
It's almost December.
As always though, I appreciate your input. Appreciate always the planning commission's input. So let's kind of start with big picture. Why? There's a need for senior housing and certainly a need in this particular area of the county. This is not a big development. I know it's big for purposes of folks who have been there, I guess, for a while. I know Chatham's Landing was built in the early 90s. But this is an investment in a, in this particularly part of that bottom, in a fairly blighted area. And there's a need for senior housing. So the number of units, the greater the number of units, the better quality that you can provide as a facility. I did hear that someone thought the rents were 1,100 or something. No, the rents are 1,500 for one bedroom and 1,800 for two. So there's only two sets of bedrooms, one and two. We're certainly happy to proffer that. And right now, we have them just evenly split at, at preliminary planning. Public safety, and then I want to also just kind of get into proffers and why we changed from the way we did. And I appreciate the Fire Marshal being here. In fact, the Fire Marshal and my client and the architect and the civil engineer and staff met before, well before an application was filed. So we did that to make sure that the Fire Marshal was comfortable with what we were proposing. So yeah, I know Mr. Appicella doesn't perhaps like the building code, but the building code is the building code. And we have, we are following the building code requirements. Same with the ordinance. Might not be too excited about how the ordinance ended up and the fact that they didn't have any additional design standards for the facilities. We're following the ordinance. So we're not trying to get, be cute. We're trying to get around anything. We are following the requirements that Stafford County has, has passed. So, and something I understand the county board of supervisors are encouraging is senior housing. So my client, obviously being part of that process, wanted to bring this project to this part of the county. And let me just say this, tourism has been a huge, huge economic development goal for the county. That, that trail is a big part of that. Having residents to be able to access that trail to go to Ferry Farm or Belmont is, is a big deal. Or, and/or into the city. The Chatham Bridge is also, when it's redone, is one of the main thrust behind Chatham Bridge improvements is pedestrian access. So all of those things are kind of coming together to make a lot of sense for why this project is being proposed. That's sort of a big picture. The also part of that process is, you know, how do you guarantee that you're going to have nice amenities on site? We got to have more units and you got to be able to charge rents that are sufficient enough to pay for them. So it's going to be a nice clubhouse, it's going to be a nice pool and parking. We're overparked. We have 235 parking spaces. We're only required to have one per unit. So we're overparked by 40%. And yeah, on both buildings, there's underground parking. It's an amenity. It's a public safety issue as well for seniors. Don't have to get out of the car and worry about bad weather and go directly into the units, into, get to the elevator to get to the units. So that's a quality piece as much as it is safety piece. And it's allowed. We can do it. It's allowed under the ordinance. So I know there's some questions about how the stories are measured, et cetera. Again, following the ordinance, not trying to be cute here. For the purposes of the proffers and appreciates staff's input on those, we heard the planning commission clearly concerned about how many people may live in the units, how many cars may be driven. So we wanted to limit the number of cars. So we said, hey, we're going to limit the number of cars to two per unit. We can do that in the proffers and we can do that in our restrictive covenants. And then also, we wanted to limit the number of people. We don't think, even in the two-bedroom, that you're going to have four people living there. We think you're going to have two people living there and their families will come visit. Their kids will come visit, their grandparents, their grandkids will come visit and they'll stay in the other bedroom. We don't foresee kids moving back in with their 60 to 70-year-old parents. We just don't foresee, see that at all. And I don't think their parents want to foresee it, which is why they shrunk their footprint, not widened it, right? Shrinking means go away. Widening means come visit. So that, so we said, hey, let's limit the occupants. And thank you to the county attorney's office. I learned something today. I didn't realize you couldn't get below a certain number. So we'll follow the law in that regard as well. The trail, which was something that was encouraged for us to provide by the planning commission and, and county staff, we're providing, that's a $500,000 savings to the county. So that's not small change. That's an important link to the trail as well. So we've proffered that. We've also proffered cash, obviously, for our impacts to public safety, which our analysis was done and agreed by staff. And of course, staff also recommended approval for this. So questioning, you know, whether or not this is an appropriate place for this development, staff has already made the determination that it is. What else, what else came up here? Just looking at my notes here, so forgive me.
What about the elevators, Mr. Bain? There was only one elevator for that building?
That's right. That's how it's designed right now. Again, that's in accordance with, with the, the ordinance and building code requirements. The height, I think there's been some questions about the height. So we've got a transition grade. If you've been to the site, you'll notice that it slopes pretty, pretty quickly from Route 3 to Naomi Road. So the transition grade drives a lot of that. So the buildings closer to Route 3 are taller than the ones that are on Naomi Road. So that's, that's the reason for that. But there are three stories, some are 55 and then some are 45. So that's, that's how that's transitioned. Traffic, traffic questions. Again, we use the VDOT ITE numbers. This is a, because this is only 170 units and generates less than 1,000 trips per day, we're not required to do a TIA, but we did do a memorandum on the traffic analysis, which basically showed 25 new, new trips in the morning and 36 in the evening. We don't anticipate a lot of folks working there. Doesn't mean they won't. If it's 55 is the minimum age in which you can live there, I'm sure some folks may continue to work. We don't see many 55-year-olds living there. We see that the average age would probably be anywhere from 65 and 75, so.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you. I would like to bring this up. This has been kind of bothering me for a little bit. I've heard several references to senior living. And it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that you only need one person aged 55 or older to live there and nobody under the age of 18 can live there. So theoretically, you could have a single parent with two college-age kids living in one of these apartments. So how does that classify senior living? I, I think that's maybe an inaccurate way to classify this.
It's age-restricted and that's, that's codified?
That's not senior though, there's differences.
Okay, well, it's age-restricted and that's, and that's very consistent with senior living. I don't know, I'm going to get into the nuances of it. But the reality is, is that that's codified. That's what state law, household state law defines it. I think the balance there is you're going to be careful with the Fair Housing Act about, you know, trying to limit what that age is higher than 55, so that, that's why it's at that level. Certainly. Certainly, again, the way this is being designed, the way that we envision the covenants for this project, the way we are looking to market people to the site, we don't want to market families, we don't want to market kids there. That's not going to be the goal. For the conversion for condos, for example, we want that flexibility. Today, we can't do condos. You'll never get a finance without being able to sell over half of them. That's just not going to happen. If you're familiar with what happened at Liberty Place in the city of Fredericksburg, they had a condo model as well, they couldn't sell them. So it's really difficult to sell them upfront. So the, the plan is, let's, let's start with multifamily leasing, and then if the market changes, let's convert them to condos. They'd be converted all at one time. That conversion would then create a condo association, which is required by Virginia law, which would then address maintenance and shared costs and all those kind of things. From the beginning, we'll have a management company that will manage it, and they will enforce the restrictive covenants. They will govern, you know, pretty much who's living there. From my, my experience in dealing with these type of housing units, the people who live there actually do a heck of a job of governing what happens on-site. So, I hope, I don't know if that answers your question, but I appreciate it. You know, technically, you're correct, but in reality, it doesn't always, it doesn't happen that way. Sometimes it does, I'm sure there's exceptions, but, but we're just following the state code system, minimum ages. I think that's, I think that covered most of the questions. Did I miss anything? Mr. Apocella, did I miss anything that you had asked? I did want to make sure.
I think we're good, and then we'll, we'll bring up the public, and then we can, we have another bite at the apple after. Let's wait, so, let's do the public. I know, I see a lot of them, they really want to talk, so, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Thank you guys for waiting two hours patiently. Some of you, I know, are chomping at the bit, so when you come down to the podium, please state your name, address, and the district that you reside, which I'm sure most of you are from George Washington. When the green light comes on, you have three minutes to speak. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute. When the red light comes on, please conclude your comments. And just a reminder, we can't answer your questions back and forth while you're at the podium, but we can address them all after you're finished. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Amanda Moon. I reside at 207 Shaw Court in the George Washington District. Since Mr. Payne had a copy of our, of my questions, he very aptly, and you very aptly asked a lot of the questions that we are quite concerned about. Some of the things that he brought up, though, one of the things that we are concerned about is Naomi Road is a, is your typical rural road. It was without shoulders, without left-turn lanes, has minimal markings, is a downhill run that makes a sharp turn under the train bridge, and that provides a narrow lane for each arch, for each, each direction.
Really quickly, can you just pull the mic a little closer?
Okay.
There we go.
All right, and it is in no way pedestrian or traffic-friendly, adding a minimum of 170 cars will even make it less so. I appreciate the fact that they're talking about putting the trail through there. Sorry to bring up a sore subject, but the thing of it is, is that trail can't go under the bridge, it's not approved to go to Ferry Farm, so what is it going to do? It's going to dump out right there at the end of Dairy Road. At the end of Dairy Road, it's a clear shot to our playground and our common area, which we really do not want to be mistaken for a park for trail walkers, to be able to come in and be able to use that area. You know, it's, it will be our responsibility, of course, to take care of that, but it would be nice if it were not, you know, if the trail were actually going somewhere. And it's very nice that they're talking about putting in sidewalks, but I noticed on their plan that the sidewalks don't connect to anything. So they don't go up and connect to the bridge, and they can't go underneath the trail, the railroad bridge, because there's not room there. And now they're talking about, you know, there's two entrances on there. So this becomes a bigger issue since there's no clear plan for the future of the bridge. So I've heard, and I could be wrong, that the railroad is not going to replace it. The bridge is falling into disrepair. So if it's closed or only allows for foot traffic, the backups on for traffic at Naomi and Kings Highway will be really substantial. So I kind of feel like that there's a lot of things. I really appreciate the fact that he addressed the rents. That is something that is different from what I think was said at the last meeting, and our, our concern is the, you know, the parking, because if there's not enough parking over there, they're going to try and come and park at our limited parking that we have. So one of the other things that I find really interesting is the current statistics that I found on the Stafford County demographics website shows that there's only 16.8% of Stafford County population is over 55. 16%. I guess that, that's a huge need for senior. There was no data on how many of those owned homes or who wanted to be renters. If you don't fill these units with people that meet that challenge, are you going to turn around and try and turn it into a Section 8? Those are our big concerns, okay? And thank you very much for bringing up the fact that it really is four stories and not three stories. And when you drive down Naomi Road, which is that really narrow, twisty, turny kind of road there, and you're going to have four stories of these buildings on the right-hand side, or left-hand side, depending on your direction, you're going to feel like you're driving through a New York canyon. So it's, you know, it's really quite a concern. So at the very least, we hope that you will not add the 64 units, that you will make them owner-occupied. I appreciate along, limiting the number of occupants, make sure that we have enough parking, improve the road, the bridge, and the stormwater plans, and assure us that it will not become Section 8. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come down and address the commission?
Hi, I'm Connie Wiley. My address is 1002 Shaw Court. I live in the, the Chatham Landing townhouses. I've lived there for 23 years, which means that I have 23, 22 and a half more years than anybody else in this room experienced living there. I walk on Naomi Road for exercise. Adding up to 340 cars to that narrow lane is a recipe for disaster. When two cars pass each other, they have to slow down. I, I don't see adding all of these extra cars to that lane and having it be successful. As Amanda pointed out, the, the trail dead, dead ends at Dairy Lane. I just don't see the point of it, but that's another story. The other thing I'm concerned about is that these are four-story buildings. I don't care what you say, these are four stories high. And if the code says three stories, and again, I'm not very familiar with the code, but if the code says three stories, then this is obviously, these buildings don't belong. I've lived there 23 years, and the road has flooded three times, to the point where you have to swim to get through the dip in Naomi. This is not a 100-year, a year floodplain. It is a eight-year floodplain. I just, I, I see that as a public safety issue, especially if the apartment's going to be occupied by elderly people. I have some other issues, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Come on down.
My name is Pam Sable. I've lived there for 29 years since it was built. I have seen many floods. There is no way to get in and out. I worked for Stafford County. I've been a bus driver for almost 14 years. If they close the jet-side of Naomi, school buses cannot make a right turn under Route 3 from Naomi. They can only come in that way, they cannot go out to the right. It floods. Where they have one section of homes, if I'm not mistaken, is there not a county code that if it is in the 100-year floodplain, that it has to have flow-through on the bottom level? If they have it as parking and it divided for all that height and weight, there can't be flow-through. It's in the Chesapeake watershed. There is so much runoff and erosion in that area as it is. The water has nowhere to go but flood because it cannot absorb into the soil. I'm sorry, I'm going to call them what they are, they're shysters. It's not for senior living, it's not for 55 and above. They're going to turn it into a money maker, and it's not there. There's going to be all the cars. You figured, almost 500 units, 500 people. Their parking isn't, it can't hold all them. They say one car per unit is what they're adding parking for. There's going to be up to four people living in half of them units. They're going to need more than one vehicle. Most of the people that are 55 and above still work. I'm 60. I'm raising my grandkids. Half of the seniors in this area have their kids and their grandkids living with them, or a good portion of them. It is so common. Make it part of what it is. But that lower part is in the 100-year floodplain and should not be built on for houses. Thank you.
Oh, did you state your address?
Oh, I'm 1009 Shaw Court.
Okay.
I live in Chatham Landing, and it is a nice neighborhood. I don't want it ruined by what they're going to bring in.
Thank you.
Because that bike trail is going to stop there. Of the trail that is in Fredericksburg, there is so much crime. I don't want it brought to my neighborhood. It can go a different way. I don't want the crime brought. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Valerie Purdy Pyron. I live at 108 Shaw Court. I've lived in Chatham Landing for 14 and a half years. My biggest concern with others is the amount of cars that are going to be part of this community that they're proposing to put up. Where are these extra cars going to go? They've made no concessions of fixing any of the roads. For a size of a construction project like this, I assume that there's going to be lots of damage to the local roads. Plenty of people in our neighborhood still work. We leave early hours to work in DC. Some of us come home late at night. Naomi Road is a dark, there's no lighting on Naomi Road. I've not seen anything in there that they're going to put any lighting on the road, any additional sidewalks. Like one of my neighbors said, she walks on that road. The other night, I was coming home late at night, I didn't have my high beams on, and somebody was walking in the road. I almost hit them because I did not see them immediately. So, you know, if, if this plan goes through, I would like to see sidewalks, some improvements to the roads, lighting on the roads. And again, I just don't see where all of these, the cars are going to go to. We barely have enough parking in our neighborhood. If they supposedly have two cars per unit times 170 units, that's 340. There's still 110 parking spots that they've not accounted for. I can't imagine that they have enough room to fit 110 extra parking spots somewhere in that community. And like everybody else said, the flooding, I've only seen one flood in the neighborhood, and for the whole entire weekend, couldn't go anywhere. My husband, who is a law enforcement officer in, in DC, stayed and worked the whole time in DC because his little car could not get through the neighborhood. So the plans that they're saying, they're going to shore up, add retaining walls, that's going to add a lot of stress to our neighborhood and to the already overrun creek that often goes way high to the point of almost flooding, and that additional stress on that, I think, will definitely make it flood more than it has before. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is George Freese, 207 Shaw Court in the Washington District. I want to try to do a little math, I'm not very good. 170 units, two cars per, 340, only 235 parking spaces. I have three levels to my townhouse. The bottom level is my garage. I live in a three-story townhouse, three levels. Bottom story, garage, they consider it a story. They're proposing four. Everything they seem to propose seems to change, and they say one thing, and then they say, oh, well, just, nothing seems to be adding up very well for this. Really, we're not against the, you know, the construction and stuff, but let's keep it reasonable. The extra 70 they're asking for, it blows all the numbers of everything else kind of out of the water. I don't see how they can really sustain it and have it be, you know, help our property values. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, Mr. Payne, would you like to close the public hearing or keep it open?
Let's, let's keep it open, please.
Okay, so we'll keep the public hearing open, and at this point, we will bring it back to the planning commission to ask any questions for Mr. Payne, the applicant. Yeah, I'll let you respond to their concerns first, and then I think Mr. Randall has about a half dozen for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. When you, when you said Mr. Payne, I thought you said Mr. Payne. Would you like to keep it open?
Oh.
Trying to sprint to the podium in time for, to answer your question. But as always, appreciate comments from the community. We hope to be a good neighbor, a great neighbor. I want to thank that community for the upkeep and maintenance of those units that were built in the early 90s. They are very nice. So their homeowners association must be working very hard. So that's a compliment to you, which attracts other investment, and that's one of the reasons why we're there. We think that's an area, and I heard some folks say they lived there for 29 years, and 22 years, and 14 years. It must be a very nice area to live in, despite some of the challenges with the floods. They still live there. I also heard someone talk about the fact that they're concerned about cars, because they exercise and walk on the roads, whether the trail will eliminate any sort of safety issue, public safety issue. And the trail's not our idea, the trail, this is a county initiative. This is a really important county initiative. Where it stops, I have no control of, but I do have control of building it across our property, add a savings to the county taxpayers. Market, I've heard a lot about the market. You guys may recall that when we came forward to expand the nursing home in Stafford County, that we had an opportunity to grab some bids, if you will, from another planning district here, because we're one of the fastest-growing aging areas. PD-16 is an entire Commonwealth. So I don't know about the statistics, 16.5% of folks 55 and older live in Stafford, but certainly in this area, there is a growing aging population, and the one thing we want with that population to do is age in place, to not go away, to be here with their families, not to go to Florida, not to go to South Carolina, or wherever they may go. So there is a market for it. We wouldn't spend $25 million building this, this, this development if there wasn't, and proffering all of the quality amenities and building materials and elevations that we are proposing. Parking, we are capped at, you know, obviously, you're only required, I think folks maybe misunderstood me, you're only required to have one parking unit per, one parking space per unit. That's 170. We show 235, so it's 40% over what we're required to do. If you, if there's not enough parking spaces, you can't have a car. So at the end of the day, it won't be any more than 235 cars on the site, so I just want to make sure that's clear. I think there's some misconceptions. This is not, this is not assisted living. This is, as we discussed earlier, senior living, age-restricted development. These folks would be independent living. We hope they live a long time and stay there a long time, so...
Just a quick question on that. So let's say that I have five kids, and my mom, who's 65 years old, runs the apartment. Can I move in there with my five kids?
No, they can't be 18 or younger.
Okay, and that'll be in, in your restricted covenants?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Because I, I said, is that going to be in your restricted covenants, or what is...
It's in the proffer statement. You can't, can't be younger than 18 to live there, and...
And then who would, who would actually enforce that?
Well, the county could enforce it, it could be a zoning issue, but it would also be in our zoning, it also would be in our restrictive covenants as well. I mean, I'm, I'm not going to buy an age-restricted facility if you don't limit the age groups that live there. So it's got to be in our covenant.
Mr. Harvey?
Madam Chairman, in our zoning definition of retirement housing, it limits that there be no one under 18 years of age, so that would resolve that concern.
And so we would strip the conditional use permit if that happened? Like, what would our enforcement be? How would we enforce it?
Under standard zoning enforcement, if we had a complaint that there was ineligible people living in dwelling units, we'd investigate. We do require people that live in those dwellings to fill out an affidavit for us verifying that there are or are not people living in the units that qualify to be there. If we found out that somebody wasn't qualified to be there, then we'd send a notice of violation... If we found out that somebody wasn't qualified to be there, then we'd send a notice of violation to the property owner.
Is this the same thing as like if there's an licensed car in the middle of a yard, where we have to go through that whole rigamarole of catching it and then going back and forth in the court system for a year and a half?
Well, Madam Chairman, with any zoning violation, there is a due process. So in the case of a violation, we would send a notice to the owner. So if it's rental apartments, the owner of the apartment complex would get the violation notice. And more than likely, they probably have an issue with their tenant. If the violation wasn't abated, then we would work through the county attorney's office to schedule it for court to get it remedied.
Okay.
But the owners also have the ability to appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals any notice of violation. So it can add time to the process.
So it could add two to three years?
Not that long, but it certainly would add time to the process.
Well, if you ask some of the people in Rock Hill who have these problems.
I don't think that would be an issue because the tenant would be violating the lease agreement, and the owner of the apartment complex and management company would be able to vacate them quick.
In addition to that, would that be the same case if you made it a condo? Would that be the same requirement? But now you're talking about individual owners. And so it definitely, at that point in time, could take a significantly longer period of time, being that you're dealing with individual owners.
Condo Association could enforce the covenants against that property owner, just like a property manager.
Right, just like my, right, my homeowners association would do the same thing. But it could be delayed significantly.
You could defend, I mean, you can go to court and defend yourself, but I mean, in a civil case, we're not talking about the government bringing a claim against you. We're talking about private.
The issue that I would have is, my son and daughter pass away, and I'm now stuck, stuck's the wrong word. I'm now given the opportunity to raise my grandchildren, and I'm in this apartment. And so the next thing I know, I'm getting a violation that says I have to move out of my apartment because now I'm forced to raise my grandchildren. I guess that would be the answer. Or I could appeal to the BZA. And if I appealed to the BZA, they would say probably no because it violates the covenants. Or if it is yes, now I'm dealing with school buses. Now I'm dealing with school impacts. Now I'm dealing with all those things. So I'm understanding that we, those would probably be the worst-case scenario. And the staff in the county would probably need to get involved. But again, as with all things, we would probably have to deal with that to some extent.
The ultimate hammer is, is that the property owner who is subject to the covenants, the zoning approval, and the CUP is on the hook, even though there's a violator they can't get rid of. So this county can withdraw and vacate that CUP approval. I don't have a project. I don't have an operating facility at that point. So I have every incentive to get them out.
Okay, keep going, sorry.
I think that's it. Unless, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Is that it? All right. You have more? Oh, okay. Can't believe it, but go ahead.
Just a couple of things based on, and I, yeah. You mentioned that there is a break-even point of good amenities requires this many units, so-so amenities gets you this many units. What is that break-even point? You said if I wanted good amenities, I need to have enough units to substantiate the right amount of money bringing into the organization and to the association so they can provide good amenities. What is that break-even point?
So we haven't fully designed the project yet. And we, I think we have a pretty much idea what, you know, what the proffers are going to be, what sort of in-kind and cash proffers would be, what those costs were. We're estimating today's construction cost and what we think to build it out. We haven't graded it. We haven't, you know, got into any site work. We don't know what we're going to run into. So at this point in time, what we're guessimating, what would be profitable, not break-even, but profitable, right? We're not, we're in the for-profit business. We're not trying to extract any sort of impact here other than the fact that we want to be able to develop this project in a manner where we can provide a quality return to our residents. So if we're going to, if we're going to proffer our amenities, which are very nice, very high-quality, and we're going to include the elevations of this facility, the site is a bit challenging for development, as you probably know, because it does have a serious slant, I mean, great transition. So all of those factors taken into account, where do we think it's reasonable to be? We wouldn't ask for the CUP if we didn't think we needed it.
So you're saying, you're saying at this point that if we, if we did not allow the CUP and gave you the, gave you the by right at 106 units, that it would not be profitable?
It would have a significant.
You would not pursue the?
It would have a significant in on the quality part.
On the quality. You would still probably pursue it, but it would just diminish the quality of the amenities?
I have to defer to my client on that question. It may not be 170 that we build out. It may be something less. Because again, we haven't finally designed this thing. But, you know, 106, it doesn't make it a very viable project.
Okay, all right. And then to your point about parking, will you, do you expect that these will be assigned per unit?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so you'll assign one per unit, and then there'll be?
The extra, the flowover would be?
65 or 70 that will be open for guests?
Guests or owners, right.
Or others?
Right.
All right, and then it?
I mean, it just encourages the units to have only one car.
Right, understand, understand that. Recognizing that the age of most of those, so if I was moving in there, I would, I would need to understand that my two-car family may need to go down to one-car family to move into that location.
So, I mean, I heard some folks laughing, which is okay, but we're only required to have one car per unit.
No, no.
So we've added 40%, more than that, to accommodate our development.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought it up. We're going to talk about requirements just for a minute. You mentioned that, and I guess I'm talking more about the right thing, not the, not the requirements. I believe, based on what Mr. Apertellis mentioned before, that we are, as a county, not completely ready for age-restricted housing because we don't have, we assume that the same standards that apply for a regular, normal family apartment complex also apply to a senior-living apartment complex. All right, and I would, I would be adamant that those standards shouldn't even be close. That to the point that was made, we would need wider walkways. We would need wider doorways. We would need all of the things that would accommodate seniors in their living environment.
Mr. Randall, can you please wrap it up?
I'll wrap it up in my list.
Come on.
All right, so are we saying that there are no amenities to that level that the applicant's willing to make for senior-living, senior-living 65, 75-year-olds who are living up there? No anti-slip, no something in, no wider tubs, no wider showers, nothing that would accommodate seniors?
I would, I appreciate your comments, and the accommodation question is also a market question. So if we're attracting older residents to our site, we, one, want them to be comfortable with the environment they're living in. But as I stated, we haven't finally designed the project. So if you ask me to build a wider walkway or hallway, what's the impact on the project in regards to being able to provide all the quality amenities and units, et cetera, that we want? So it's just, it's premature for us to make that determination. If we proffer it, we put ourselves in a box, and then we come back here and ask for a proffer amendment because, hey, we can't build it without getting rid of some of these requirements. So we're trying to avoid that, quite honestly. But at the end of the day, we're going to be marketing to likely folks who are 65 and older. I mean, I'm one year away from being 55, and I don't plan on retiring. I've got three young kids. I'll be working till I'm 99. But I just, because we're trying to attract that market, I think you're probably going to see in the final designs, you know, more, as you say, accommodating design features. But it'd be difficult to proffer that at this stage without impacting the project. But you make a really good point. All right.
You're good, thank you.
I am.
All right. Mr. Bain, this is in your district. Thank you, Mr. Payne. I think we're good.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Bain, this is in your district. What would you like to do?
It's in my district? I wish it was in the next district. I'm truly not happy with the development as it's currently proposed.
You guys kept the public hearing open.
I know we did, I know.
You guys going to close it before you make a motion, or?
Not if he makes the motion. I think he's going to make.
Gotcha, all right.
We're good, we're good. I'm not happy with the development as it's proposed, especially with the conditional use permit. The density is just way too high. There are a number of issues that I still have some questions about that I would like to pursue further. Some of the things that were mentioned tonight, the congestion and the lack of lighting on Naomi Road, the condition of Naomi Road, the trail that is going to dead-end at the roadway going into the Chatham Landing area, the parking issues. Even though they're offering more parking, I'm concerned because two per unit still exceeds the number of parking spaces they're providing. The issue related to the number of stories, you can argue that several different ways. But regardless, there's going to be more cars and more traffic, and there's going to be a road safety issue to concern ourselves. I would really like to take a little more time to evaluate this and get together with county staff to pursue it a little further. So I would like to make a motion to defer to the, would it be the second meeting in November?
Well, the time, I believe the time limit on this is October 18th. So we would have to defer it to our first meeting in October, which would be October 9th. No, yeah, 9th, yeah, October 9th.
I will have to do a lot of work between now and October 9th, but I would like to try and do that if we could.
So you have a motion?
That would be my motion.
Motion on the floor to defer to October 9th. Do we have a second?
Defer what? Which items?
Both items.
Both.
Both items.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chairman.
Okay, so you have a motion, a second. Any discussion, Mr. Bain?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. English?
No, ma'am.
Anyone else? All right, go ahead and vote. Tally the vote. Okay, motion carries six to one. Okay, so that's, or do we need to do it on both, or that carried for both, right?
I think you made it clear in the motion.
Yeah, okay, very good.
I would like to just highlight to the citizens here, especially from Chatham Landing, that the public input portion is still open. So if you have additional comments, get them to me or to the Planning Commission, either through the county or directly to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we are moving on to item number five, which is already a deferral of the public hearing continued to October 23rd. There's no unfinished business. So now we're moving on to new business, which is the amendment to the zoning ordinance for time limits for planning applications. And I believe Mr. Harvey is going to talk about six very quickly because I think the notion is that we want to defer this.
Yes, Madam Chairman. Item six and seven are zoning ordinance amendments that were referred to the commission by the Board of Supervisors. In reviewing those ordinance amendments, staff believes that we need to make some additional adjustments before the commission authorizes a public hearing. In particular, with item six, we're looking at potentially streamlining the ordinance, so we are amending fewer sections of the code. And then also with seven, we feel that there's some additional exceptions that need to be considered for the mandatory requirement for turn lanes, specifically in situations where there's not adequate right-of-way or VDOT would prohibit construction of a turn lane. So those are some additional adds we want to put into those amendments, and therefore, staff's recommending deferral to your next meeting.
Do you need a motion on that? I know Ms. Lucian likes us to make motions, so.
I like motions, they're always safer, so.
Okay, do, okay, we'll do them separate. Okay, motion to defer item six until the next, do you want the second meeting in October, or what?
Just to play it safe, that would be wonderful, for October 23rd.
October 23rd. Motion to defer to October 23rd?
Defer item six and seven to October 23rd.
Yes, please.
Both items.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? None? Okay, go ahead and vote. Tally the vote. Okay, motion carries seven zero. So now, back to you, Mr. Harvey, Planning Director's report.
Thank you. The only additional item I have was we included your expenditures for the year. You're within budget.
Can we get you a raise? We did really good. We're like 10% of our budget or something.
Well, it's only first quarter of the fiscal year, so we're in good shape at this point in time. And that concludes my report, Madam Chairman.
Ms. Lucian, do you have a county attorney's report?
Madam Chairman, Planning Commission, I have no report.
All right. And no, we have actually no active subcommittees. This is amazing. I don't have a chairman's report. Just of note, TRC is October 9th. We have no approval of meeting minutes. Meeting adjourned.